I've held community events at the Marianna Black Library and that regional system is crucial to being able to have all those services and supports. And I fall back on people who said it much better than I ever could. United we stand, divided we fall.
All right, I'm Terry Stevenson, 525 Gospel Road. I'm back again. Waited two weeks for a phone call. Received it from the railroad. I hadn't received it from no higher up leadership to help us know what's going on with the fire that the railroad caused. I think as a community, we ought to really realize that we're a lot better than just one side of the tracks or the other side of the tracks. We're all part of this community. It ain't whether you live in town or you live at Lower Larka. We're not the deplorables of Lower Larka or misfits. Now, some people, they live on Lower Larka. If their property was affected or burned or affected or threatened, it'd be handled immediately. I waited two weeks for a phone call. I went to the railroad and talked to their speaker, talked to them, told them to call me. I've called them and they hadn't called me. We know that they did it. It's just a matter of accountability that leadership needs to hold them to. We need to get this resolved quicker the better because I've got better things to do on my Tuesday night and I'm sure y'all don't want to hear me crack about it over and over. Just wanted it over with. They damaged my property and everybody else's property. The Smoky Mountains is a big park. It has a lot of tourism comes to this area. Everybody's putting their weight on the train helping this town. It really don't help this town that much. I do cabin rentals, I do vacation rentals, I do regular rentals in Jackson County and Swain County. My vacation rentals have done just fine in Jackson County, just as much as they do Swain County. The train don't affect it that much. Now, the people that stay in my cabins would go to town, eat dinner, shop your shops just the same as if they came in on the train. Maggie Valley's done fine. The casino, all that they get per cap, everybody in town gets a little bit of money off of that. Higginford's done great, Gattonburg's done great. We're being held up because we're financing a train that needs to finance itself. It got a million dollars in federal money for safety. Why does their crossarms not work if they got a million dollars from the federal government for safety? Why do we buy them a train instead of an engine, instead of them buying us a power engine? I think we need to put the balance back in balance. They don't own us. We own this town. As a community, we own our community. We should be the ones saying what the shots are, not them. They're not above the law. They think they are. They're not being held accountable. So, I feel like they ought to be held accountable and held to a higher standard. If you're going to say that you're the in all, be all of town, then you ought to be held to a higher standard of ethics in being fair to the community. Some people build houses on the other side of the tracks. Can't access your new house. Them houses pay taxes for years and years and years. Those people live here all year long. Nice houses. Railroad says you can't access that property. The railroad is affecting economic development in a negative way. They're telling you what you can and can't do on the other side of the tracks. Telling people what they can and can't do with their land. Forcing us to pay for crossing insurance, which is a joke. They need to pay their own crossing insurance, they need to pay operate their own train, and everything they do needs to be funded by them, not us. If anything, they should be helping us, not us helping them. If you run a business, you maintain your business. If you can't afford it, you just can't afford it. And if you go bankrupt, you go bankrupt. If you burn somebody's place now, you pay for it. You sure as world don't drag it out and try to cover it up and hide it. That's what we've been going through. They're not above the law. I don't understand why it took two weeks and I can't get a phone call. Simple phone call. I've came to the leadership. Like I said, anybody else that got their property burnt that was important, maybe something be different about it, but they seem to think that we're deplorables or misfits and not even going to give me a common courtesy of a phone call. I deserved a phone call, I deserved an insurance information, just like any other accident. It was an accident. But them keeping covered it up, it's a criminal offense that this needs to be done and done something now. People need to know. This needs to be handled. It was just, people's lives could have been lost. We got lucky. Luck don't last forever. So, let's stop the luck and let's hold them accountable and get this over with now. And they don't own this town, we own this town. We pay more taxes, we're funding them instead of them funding us. They need to fund their own train. A million dollars is not no joke to take it and then have broken crossarms. I think those would like to investigate seeing federal money spent on crossings not working. What do you do with a million dollars if you didn't fix your crossings? What do you do with a train that's leaking oil and catching on fire and you just won't even say that you did it? I just wanted it over with. I'd like to get back to my regular life and I think everybody that was affected needs to be made whole. And I think I need a phone call this week. I'll be back in two weeks to do this again.
Genevieve Spire, pronounce your name correct?
Uh...
Oh, Spire, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. Not much of a public speaker, but I'll give it my best shot. I've attended a couple of meetings now with the same concerns that Mr. Stevenson has had. I accidentally went to the school board meeting with it. Some people have seen that. It was rather embarrassing, but I guess the more publicity, the better. So, um, yeah, I just have many of the same concerns as him. I would like to also add, and I know that he feels the same, we want to thank the firefighters that were out there. They kept our houses from burning down. But he, as well as I, lost a significant amount of property. Um, everything is charred, trees have been charred around my elderly mother's house. These trees could fall on her home. I'm looking into getting arborists out there to figure out if these trees could cause potential damage in the future, as well as in fact, with all this heavy rainfall, I've had an immense amount of erosion on my road because all of the underbrush that was there is now burnt up and the water's just pouring down my road. I have about a quarter of a mile long driveway, which will cost thousands of dollars to fix. And I want to know who's going to pay for these damages because, you know, if it wasn't for the firefighters stopping that fire from burning the house, we would have lost everything. Like most people in Lower Larka, we don't have it house insurance. We own our land. We have been paying taxes in this county since the seventies. Um, I'd like to inquire about what sort of funds the train puts back into the county and the city, because I went to the alderman's meeting and when I asked about what was going to be done for future precautions from stopping this sort of incident again, they passed it off on y'all and they said they've been asking you guys to actually have a fire tax implemented. Well, I understand why you don't want to do that. People are struggling already in the county. You know, many people are not living in these super nice houses like the city has. So, with that being said, I don't cause fires. My neighbors don't cause fires, but I know who has caused a fire and I know who needs to be paying the tax that they're trying to make us pay. Because I don't think I should be charged with an extra tax when I'm not out there burning stuff up. And the fact that people that are out there burning stuff up have caused fires before, previously in Colorado, they have had to pay out twenty million dollars for a fire they caused out there. And they were, they were forced to carry a railcar behind their train on dry days to put out any sort of incident that happened again. This was in a court of law for them to do that. So, they know the solution to the problem they caused. They decided not to have that solution here for whatever reason. It was a burn ban, none of us could burn. They knew better. They had burnt stuff before on dry days in Colorado and they paid for it. And they knew the solution to have here in Bryson to keep it from happening, but because they wanted to cut funding, or maybe it's a bad image for their train to be pulling a fire engine behind it, it basically says, you know, here's a red flag that this train causes fires and catches on fire. And as Mr. Stevenson said, they leak an immense amount of diesel fuel that's polluting our river, that's polluting our waterways. It's obviously flammable. Um, I would like to add to the fact that he said they had a million dollars in maintenance grants. They actually had two million the previous year that was given to them by the North Carolina, North Carolina Department of Transportation. So, I've reached out to them and I want to know where they've spent this money. I want to know where they put that money into maintenance because they're having problems with maintenance that they should not be having when our taxpaying money is going in towards, you know, NCDOT, which should be, basically, we're paying the train for maintenance that they're not doing through our taxes. So, with that being said, I want damages paid, I want future prevention, and I want accountability.
Mr. Edward Mercer?
I'll pick you can again. Edward Mercer, I live on Mercer Mountain. Number, public comments. My question is, it's like an argument. We get to make our statements, we get to ask for help, we get to, but we never hear an answer. We never have, when do we get, when, when can we adjust this agenda where we actually have a conversation? Okay? Uh, you know, back to the railway. You know, they leased the track by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Rail Division. They lease it. Yes, they did get that grant money. There's two crossings on the River Road. I have pictures on my phone. Okay? They're deteriorating. The one to the east is, you know, it's a statute. Any damage occurred on that crossing, they're liable. So, if you cut a tire, let me tell you what they tell you. They don't return your phone call either. Okay? Um, who fights? Who fights? We look at you to fight for us. I'll spend the rest of my three minutes in silence because that's all I've gotten. I have not gotten an answer except from one department, the Sheriff's Department, out of courtesy because we've had things to say. They approached us and gave a excellent explanation to our questions, answered them so there was no more doubt. You know, it's time where we'd like to have some answers, not just comments. Hell, I can go home and talk to the wall. It don't answer me either. I'll spend, risk my time in silence and respect all of y'all. Give us some time where we get time to hear a solution from somebody that can do something besides us bitching about things. I voted for all of you. Silence is what I'm tired of hearing. Please help us out, respective, answering some of our questions that we do ask. Change the agenda or something. This comment, everybody comes up here and asks, tells you all we have problems. Change the agenda where we actually, there's a work session where we actually have answers. Hold you all accountable for the answers that we're asking, questions.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Carolyn Allison. I live at 288 Wester Ridge Lane in Bryson City, which is the Nantahala Gorge. And I am here tonight to thank you for advocating for the Marianna Black Library. I've been a resident of Swain County for thirty years. I wasn't born here, but I'm not leaving. And I just want to say that I appreciate the community that I live in and I have been involved with and seeing the benefit of the Marianna Black Library. I am a Rotaryian and have been since 2019, I believe. I've been a Big Brother, Big Sister. I've had two little sisters and I am a volunteer at the Friends of the Library Bookstore. Both, all three of those instances, Rotary, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Friends of the Library, I've seen the benefit of the library in all of those instances. I've visited with my little sister at the library, attended the events up at the library. I am a child of a librarian, so I grew up reading and so I see the value of a library in a community. And I think our community has shown that we want to have a library to continue in this community and we see the value in it. And I see that we have people who are working to renovate and upgrade the library. So, please, if I could ask for you to approach your peers in Jackson County and ask them to reconsider dissolving the agreement that all three of the counties signed with the Fontana Regional Library, that it benefits everybody. And if we lose that association, our county and others will really lose benefits that we have here. So, thank you for your time.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a lifelong resident of Swain County. Some of my earliest memories are of the Fontana Regional Library Bookmobile that my grandmother drove. I don't even remember how many years she drove it. But without the library, there's a lot of people that would not have access to books. I wouldn't have a lot of the command of the English language that I do have that is a pain in some people's thoughts, sides if it weren't for this library. So, I just kind of support the library also. Thank you guys for doing that. I know that some of you worked hard to keep the library there. So, thank you. As far as the train goes, our little old county was surviving pretty well before the train. They were attracted to this region because we already had tourism. And, you know, we're keen on this division of locals and transplants, which is total bullshit. If you transplanted, your roots are here and you're as part of this garden as we are and we need to start recognizing that and sticking together. With that being said, we had tourism before the train. It is a shame that the train runs over residents the way they do and a blind eye is turned to it. We make accommodations for them. The roof of that building down there where we bought them their steam engine and built that building for them, have y'all looked at the roof? Any of you? Please stop and look at the roof of that building. It is corroding away. It's falling off in pieces. The storm drains, that rainwater runs straight down the gutters, straight to the storm drain, straight to the river. And they've got aluminum down there to replace it with, but they haven't got around to it. So, look at that. There is numerous ways that they pollute the county. Somebody's tipped them off. They've turned their train horn down a little bit, but it definitely breaks safe decibel levels on the regular. Now, we're forced to sit there at the red light while they do whatever they're doing. Somebody, I don't know if it's going to be the town, the train, somebody's going to have to put a crossing guard down there because we can't have a red light and there's a little crossing arm and they don't have to agree to go by their lot, you know? We're kind of in a quandary there with pedestrians ride away, but the lots, so we're going to have to work on that. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate the Sheriff's Department has went out of their way to make some explanations on a one-on-one level. Mercer's right about that, little bit of explanation. Communication with your constituents goes a long way. So, I'm going to keep on like stirring things because I want change in this county. I don't want the good old boy system to continue. I don't want us as residents being suffering the consequences of our tax dollars going somewhere that's not to the services that we need. So, thank you all again for listening. Appreciate that. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ellen Snodgrass, Conleys Creek, on the correct side of the river in Swain County. You all know me as Chair of the MBL Board and we have some board members here tonight. I was going to, I had something planned to say, but these people said so eloquently, spoke in favor of not only the project, but the Fontana Regional Library. So, I'll just let what they said speak for us. Thank you.
That is the end of public comment. Next will be our discussion and voting items. First up is our Health Department report. Does she go to the bathroom? Okay. We'll, we'll come back around to that one. Uh, we'll go down to Swain County Schools' request for funding and I'll let Ms. Lottie take it over from there.
So, there are, I'm sure that you recall when they received their funding from the state for their fifty-two million dollar grant, there is a county match of two point six million. That was discussed, but we did not actually decide where that money's coming from. So, we do have to decide where that money is coming from. It was discussed out of interest. There is interest money there that can cover that, or the other option would be a debt service, so we'd have to take out a loan in order to cover that. So, we need to finalize that as the, because the project is moving forward. They're, you know, in the planning stages still, so you're not seeing ground moving, but they are starting to have to pay some bills. So, we've got to decide where that match is coming from because it, the grant is written that some of that match will be used for the planning and the beginning stages of the project.
What do you, gentlemen, think?
It'd not be better to do the interest, pay interest.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Going into debt means that you are paying interest on what you borrowed, yes.
We get it out of interest account for our fifty-two million, then we won't be paying the interest out of it.
It, it'll come out, yes, correct, out of the interest. So, the fifty-two million's sitting there because we can't touch that, but the interest that's moved over monthly will be there. And it will not drain that account. It'll leave between three and four based on, you know, interest rates and what we're receiving in that account if we're to use that money there.
Well, I make a motion that we take the money out of that account rather than borrowing money to do it. Mr. Chubb, how much money have we got in there?
There's about six. It just depends.
Six million? I mean, it, it couldn't about depend.
No, no, it, well, interest rate, so, so, interest, yes, as the interest rates are high, we're getting more, but as we see those drop, you're going to see that funding.
I'm not saying nothing about the interest. I mean, how much is in that account? How much have we got interest money?
Like I said, I would have to get the exact amount, but it's between five, five and a half and six.
And he's wondering how much?
Two point six.
I thought Mark was just coming down here today to tell us everything was going great and he didn't need no man.
I think that was part of the deal or the grant that we, the county asked to match.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right. It is a requirement.
Yeah, there's a county match, yes.
So, I'm going to second the motion that we take it out of interest money on the North Shore side.
I don't think we've had enough discretion about it and know what we're doing enough to even vote on it.
I think we do, I think we need to get this going tonight. We need to...
Well, I mean, they, they have received the grant and we're required to match it. So...
Well, they're no choice. What is the time limit on matching?
That would be a Mr. Sell question because I don't know that there's a really time limit per se, but it was, the way the grant was written, those funds would be used at the beginning of the project.
When the grant had been written, the match is to be used at the beginning. If that be changed, then we'll have to go back to DPI and see if they'll allow it. But at this point, we have invoices coming in from the architects, planning, that we have to pay for from something.
Would you come on up here, Mark? Let's talk.
So, as I was saying, that...
Just repeat what you said.
Well, as I, as I was saying, if, if you want to change the way that the grant has been approved, we would have to go back to DPI and request that change. And I don't know if they would allow that or not because we haven't done that. The other piece is in the grant, it does say that the two point six million match will be going towards the elements at the beginning, including planning, which is what we're doing right now with our architects. And we are receiving bills from them that need to be taken care of. I, I've got the numbers that we have received recently. We received an invoice for May, for April of twenty-four thousand dollars. We were expecting an invoice for thirty-seven thousand from May. LS3P, our architects, are anticipating twenty-seven thousand dollars needed thirty, in June, thirty-five thousand dollars needed in July, sixty-three thousand dollars needed in August, and then sixty-five thousand dollars needed in September. Those are projections, David, because if we're going to draw money down from, from Raleigh in any way, then we need to go ahead and make a request for that so that we can have that on hand, so that we can meet our payments within thirty days.
What's, what, what is going to be their total when they get that picture of our school drawed out there? What, what is going to be the total for the architect?
Right now, they are capped at a total, you need to let me think for just a second because I haven't looked at those numbers lately. I am going to say, and I would ask that after I say this, you would give me an opportunity to go look to make sure.
Well, we don't hold you to it.
Well, I just, I like, I like to speak accurately, but I haven't looked at that lately. We are looking at a six percent cost of the building project up to forty million dollars. That totals out to two point four million for the architect. Now, beyond that, there will be a negotiation if there is additional need, but that's in contract with LS3P. Okay? So, when we, that will include all of the drawings, all of the certificates that are needed, all of the pieces, and I would be pleased to show you a list of what they have included in that. I have it on my computer in my office. That includes all of those preliminary elements before we ever begin to turn dirt. Okay? Because that's a big cut point for everything. You get all the planning done, everything laid out, and then you begin to turn dirt. So, up to that point, it's six percent of forty million. That's the estimate, the early estimate of the cost of the building project itself. Okay?
How many engineering, how many engineering firms did you go to and say, this is what we wanted to do? What would be your estimate?
We provided the opportunity for engineering, for architect firms across the Southeast to come in. To my memory, Philip, there were four. There were four that came in and gave presentations. Two of those, we, we set aside immediately in our committee. The other two, we had additional conversations and even visited projects that they had in completion. And then the committee made a decision to go with LS3P for a bid. Okay? And we're using a little bit of a different process than a lot of people might be familiar with because in the past, we would have gone with a, a design, bid, and then build. Correct? This is a construction manager at risk process where you hire an architect and a construction manager at risk before you really get into the design. So, your construction manager can work along with your architect and that way, they come back to you. Remember that point I was talking about turning dirt? Okay? They come back to you with a final price and they say, this is what it's going to cost. And at that point, we have the opportunity to say, that's too much. We're going to have to make some adjustments. And so, then we work together with them and change the design to meet our ability to pay, your ability to pay. Okay? And right now, after we did all of those pieces, LS3P was the organization that was agreed to go.
But now, I, I'm, I'm for you so for you.
Okay.
But like you said, if we come back and we say, that's too much, and we send, we send these architects back to redo, you're going to keep getting them thirty-seven thousand a month, seventy thousand a month.
We, we are, they are capped.
Keep rolling up the hill.
They are capped at six percent. That's in the contract. They are capped.
Any other questions?
I apologize, but excuse me, when you mentioned forty million dollars, was the fifty-two million just something that was rapidly found out there or...
No, no, no. Fifty-two million is the, the total amount that the legislature allows for a middle scho, or was allowing for a middle school project for the past two years. Okay? Now, it is possible that after this... Now, it is possible that after this session, which they're in the middle of right now, they may change that number. Because all of that money is a critical need building fund, okay? And you have to compete through grant, for grant requests for that, right? And there's a certain amount of money that they have appropriated in the budget to meet that, all right? So we applied for fifty two million, and that's what we were given for a middle school. Now, the forty million number that you're hearing is an early estimate of what the construction alone will cost, right? That doesn't include all of the other elements that have to go into that, including, okay? Including some of the things like furnishing the building and some other pieces like that. We, we, in our budgeting process, we have allowed ourselves, uh, you're, one of y'all gonna have to help me with this. It, it's an amount that you allow to cover items as they come along. Okay, it's not a slush fund. That's what everybody's gonna think. That's not what I mean, okay?
Contingency?
Contingency. We have designed a s- a healthy contingency in there, just in case we start, we start moving dirt up there and we run into something like we have before, and, and now we're having to spend extra money. We've built that in, okay? So that forty million dollars number that you heard from me, I wanna go back, is an early construction estimate based on four hundred dollars a square foot. Cause we were, we were looking at a hundred thousand square foot building, okay? It is our intent to keep it as close to that as possible. But you know, as well as I do, that the cost of things are escalating. That's another, see, I don't, I don't, I don't, should I be talking to everybody?
You're, you're doing all right. Well, hey, your answer to questions, and we appreciate that.
What was I saying?
As things go up.
Everything is going up, okay? And it's going to be our goal to keep everything as, as close to that as we possibly can. Again, we have a contingency built in to allow for some increase. And, and we're not designing a Taj Mahal. We're designing a building that will function and will be safe and will give a good educational opportunity with modern amenities such as more than two outlets on a wall, all right? For the students for the next fifty years. Did that answer your question?
The, the numbers just sit in the match, and I, I realize furniture, everything.
Yes. Yes. Got, you have to think about what it's gonna cost for paving and, and all, ain't nothing cheap either. Especially when you're doing big construction, yeah?
Yes, Mark, agree. We, we, we need to, we need to have a middle school. Century of that. What I'm afraid of is that we'll break around, we go building, and we may even have a building standing there. We still ain't gonna have water and sewer to it.
I have the same concern.
I'm afraid to break into that money like that, because we're gonna hit big problems with the water and sewer.
And, and I think, I think that everyone in the room and, and across the county shares that concern as well. Uh, what I can tell you at this point, David, is that, uh, the town is working exceptionally hard to get that taken care of. We are partnering with them, along with state and now federal officials, to bring funding in for that. Now, do we have a guarantee of that, that money? We do not. We, and I'll be transparent with you, but just today, I sent three email out. Uh, one to Kevin Corbin, uh, one to Mike Clampett, and then another to the representative for, uh, Congressman Edwards, Senator Bud, and Senator Tillis. Because I've had personal conversation with two of their offices about the needed for support. And I'll tell you that sen-, that group, that Representative Congressman Edwards is putting this into the process of, of looking for a six million dollar grant out of Washington. Now, in the meantime of all of that, Nate Boe, who is the engineer, has written a wonderful letter with, uh, supporting documentation that has gone to Congressman Edwards. Uh, because they're saying, this is a concern. If they'll move on this in Washington and Raleigh now, we'll have no problems, none. And, and I understand your concern. I, this, that, David, this is one of those things that wakes me up at four o'clock in the morning, and then I go to pray, okay? But I, a- and at that point, I have to stop, because I'm gonna slide out of superintendent mode into something else, okay? But we have to move forward, in my opinion.
And say we've got nearly six million, and you're wanting two point four of it?
Two point six is, is the required match.
Really high to what we've got.
I, I think it'd be.
Any, any more questions for me? Anything? Thank, thank you for, thank you very much, thank you.
I think one thing, if, if we do decide to do this, I, and I know there's been some, uh, comments to us into the school about how to use, you know, the North Shore in, in the school system and things like that. I think that would be a good thing that in some way, whether it's classrooms or, or something that it's a, you know, not a, uh, jab, but a, a, a good thing to, to, in a remembrance to, to that, to that area.
I'm not for that, Mr. Charman, period. Though you, that, that man was took away from people and stuff. It wasn't, we don't need to name no classroom. We don't need to, to, uh, name no school. Let it be Swain County Middle School, like I was.
Well, I, I'm not saying.
That's a, that's a, that's a big sore, and there's no need to rub it wrong again.
I, I'm not saying naming it something else. I'm saying, you know, maybe have some curriculum or something that would teach our students about that time period and, and what happened during that time period, you know? Or, or something of remembrance of that time. I know that's a health thing, but it's important, that's our history. That's our county history. And so it's important for our kids to know that.
Tell them to go to decoration when they haul them old people across in the boat and they can walk a mile upside of the hill to get to their cemetery. That the wild hogs and the Alps tore down their tombstones and rid it all up, and that'll give them something to remember.
So we got a, a, a motion and a second on, on the table to using the interest money? Any other comments? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Likewise, three to one, it passes. Uh, Lottie, there was a second part, too, that we don't have to, okay? All right, Health Department, re- report?
Good evening. In front of you, you should have the vaccine usage report for twenty twenty four. Just a couple of reminders, of course, state supplied is for uninsured, underinsured, Medicaid, and those nineteen and younger. Uh, private, of course, is that, uh, fee for service from the Health Department. Just a couple of things to note for twenty twenty four for T D A P. Uh, we saw an increase in private vaccines last year due to increase in cases of pertussis, which is the whipping cough all over the state. Um, influenza, we have seen a significant decrease of the vaccine at the Health Department. Usually I order around two hundred doses, uh, last year. And for this past, or for twenty three, twenty four, we've given out, you know, less than a hundred doses. So going forward, we are only gonna order a hundred doses going forward. Of course, we still have the private vaccines, um, and then the COVID nineteen vaccine, of course. Um, that was, or used to be state supplied and that used to be free, that ended this past, uh, early spring. So right now, for a COVID vaccine, for an adult at Swain County Health Department, it would cost a hundred and seventy dollars. So we do not order COVID nineteen vaccine, because we would probably eat that cost. So if anyone asks for a COVID nineteen vaccine, we do refer them to Jackson County or Macon County Health Department for that. Going forward, I will bring this report to you, uh, yearly in the spring with my other numbers that I do for environmental health and for C D. So it'll be included going forward.
Any questions?
Make a motion, as you said.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is our J C P C County Plan and Certification. It's a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, just for everybody. I know acronyms can get a little crazy, so Juvenile Cr- Crime and Prevention Council. Uh, you have the plan in your packet. Lottie, do you wanna go over any of it?
Sure. The only thing on the second page is their executive summary, which talks about how they're fulfilling their duties based on general statute. And this is for the plan, um, fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So they have to present it, and it has to be approved for them to move forward. So as you see, they have identified some strategies and services. So there's a priority for funding that's identified through a risk and needs assessment and a resource assessment. So they will be planning, these are the, the plans for their funding. Tutoring, academic enhancement, interpersonal skill building, um, experiential skills, vocational skills, restitution or community service, temporary shelter care, runaway shelter, and then restorative services or teen court. Then there's gonna be some monitoring and evaluation. So programs that are funded are monitored, and then they, they provide the monitoring results at the board meetings. And then their funding recommendations. So within their allocation of funding, they receive certain, um, programs that they fund. So what they have put in their funding recommendations are pay setters at thirty eight thousand, three hundred and sixty seven, mountain mediation services at fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars, and then Hawthorne Heights at twenty four thousand, five hundred and one. So, and then they have administrative costs of three thousand, seventy seven dollars. So that is their executive summary. The rest, if you go through it, it talks about, um, who's attending what meetings. Those are quarterly meetings. Tanner sits on that board as a community member. Um, you also see the plan that they set forth. The total for the funding is eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty nine dollars, with a local funding of right around, um, seventy, I, I mean, yeah, seventy nine hundred. And then the rest is coming out of, uh, J C P C, uh, D P S funding. So you can review their thoughts, what they're doing. It's just a yearly thing that they do have to present, and we have to approve it.
It's a good program, uh, to help our kids who are in need. Um, you know, kids who have some trauma or troublesome backgrounds. They, they, they get the help that they need, uh, through different programs. It's not just one way fits all, you know? So, um, the, all three programs that we work with, with our county, they do different style of mediation with these kids. And so, um, it's, it's, it's a great thing to see, um, how our kids, not just in our county, but in our surrounding counties get help. And every county has a J C P C board, so it's not just our county that does this.
Have these kids been in trouble with the law?
Some of them, yes. Some of them are for truancy, which is being absent from school, uh, habitually. Um, just different issues, different issues of life. And, uh, you can, you know, you can talk to any of these, uh, pay setters, uh, mountain mediation. Hawthorne Heights is right here in town. Uh, Ms. Kara, she's the executive director down there, and she can, you know, she'll let you go on a tour through it and let you talk to her and answer any questions, um, about anything that they do there. Um, and they do a great job. Um, and Lottie mentioned about monitoring, we have to go once a year and sit and go through a whole process with, with each program and, uh, answer questions and make sure that they're doing what they're, say they're doing with the money, so. Any other questions or comments?
Who is the director of the?
Uh, the, the, the board, so Brian Davis, he is, uh, with D J J. He, he is in the county. All of our people that are on the board are in, on, in our county. They worked.
So, so he does do the, the, right, he's like the director over there, hold on.
Uh, he's just the chairman of the board.
So this board right here, that's on this list, this is basically the?
No, there's, there's many other people on that board. Um, you have, uh, like Ms. Misty Jones, clerk of court. Um, you have, uh, many others. I think there's a list, if you go at the very last page. Is it the last page? Sorry.
Oh, there it is.
Page twenty one, yes. Uh, you can see here, there are people from the school system. There's a police department, sheriff's department, uh, district attorney. Um, just all like different, different people who, from different walks of life, who are taking this. So you were asking that we approve their exec- executive summary? Is that what they need? I make a motion, we approve the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, uh, executive summary. We got a motion and a second to accept the county plan for J C P C. Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes.
How much money do we give them the last?
It's right around the, the same amount, yes. Yeah. It's a percentage in their allocation from, at the state level, doesn't change very much. I don't know that it's changed in several years.
No, it hasn't. We got a motion and a second. Any other, any other questions, guys? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is the Heritage Festival.
So in the packet, there has been a request from the Swain County Heritage Festival for twenty twenty five. They have asked for five hundred dollars just to help, uh, the overall Heritage Festival. Uh, obviously, that's coming up quickly, as we're aware of. So they went ahead and just, it was just recently submitted. So that's their request within the packet. This has not been something that we have supported in the past. We do have, um, organizations that ask for different small funds.
I, I think for several years, they lacked because they haven't asked. So they're, this year, that we made a point to make sure that they come and ask for something instead of complaining to us that we never support that. So I, I'm all in favor of supporting this request. And matter of fact, I'll make a motion that we support the Heritage Festival with the five hundred dollars. And if they have, uh, expenses after that, and they wouldn't let us know what they are, I would consider that, but I'm not gonna include that on the motion. I'm just saying, let's do the five hundred dollars they've requested. That's it. A motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. Next is our revow contracts.
So we, we've kind of went back and forth discussing revow. We had the one contract submitted. Uh, we did have some discussion with some outside people. Again, there were some companies that just said completely no. The other gentleman that we have talked to that did the one previous, he has submitted his contract as well, which you have a copy of that. It's the C B Ferris proposal. Um, he proposed, as well as the other one, a per parcel amount. So probably the difference within the two companies is going to be the personnel that they're bringing with them. I did ask the newest about his personnel. He said he could have a possibility of bringing two people with him. He did not say if they worked directly for him, if it would be a contract with him. And then he would also, um, he would like to think about using some, uh, employees out of the assessor's office. There's just two down there, so that would mean if he uses one. uh, employees out of the assessor's office. There's just two down there. So that would mean if he uses one, all the work gets put on one for the time period. The plan, his plan would also be to start in the, the summertime now for it to be completed in twenty-eight. So there's not much difference as far as the prices go. I know we've talked about hiring, you know, uh, doing it in-house. There were some comments and questions about can we do this in-house? It is, it's always a possibility. That would mean that we would have to hire additional staff. Those people, it would be like temporary positions. They would be like temporary full-time for the year or two, whatever it took. Um, there would be some training involved for that as well. So we would have to consider the salary and the benefits that we would have to pay for those people during that time period for them to be employed temporary. And then of course, the other question that would raise from that would be, are we going to be able to find people that are willing to accept a temporary position? So, um, I don't know that the cost savings for hiring and doing that would be a lot different.
Yeah. So just for, uh, purposes, if you don't have the other contract in front of you. So the one we got tonight was five hundred thousand. And then the other one that we got previous was five hundred and forty-three thousand. But what, like Lottie said, we might have to, or would have to hire a few people um, to, to either help or to run the, the service. So.
And it's a possibility that he would contract people, but it does not specify if that would be additional, if he had to contract for more people, if that would be additional or not. So that would be a, a question to clarify if that was, uh, the thought process, you know, if, if you are only bringing two people and you really need two more and we're, we don't want to have someone out of the job within their office and you're going to have to hire more people as the, the person that is the contract. You know, is that an additional cost on top of that? Cause it just says, um, may hire personnel if required. So it does not specify if they would, if he would need, uh, more funding on top.
That's true.
Yes.
I don't believe I would enter into a contract, somebody that, for them to do work for me. If they was going to do the work, but I had to order people to do it for me. It, it don't make no sense. Thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cent per parcel. That means a great big parcel is the same as a little bit of a acre, doesn't it?
And there's been some further discussion, you know, is there ways to help, uh, with some of those larger parcels? And, and maybe adjust some of the cost of either.
Is this one of the bids where the man was just going to fly a drone over and do it?
This is the gentleman that did our last revow, that did it, um, by, by the flyover.
And the other fellow? That was wanting to go from place to place.
No, this, this is the same thing. He would still be, this would still be a boots on the ground. So it's a, it's the same type of contract. He would, uh, he also wanted to do, um, step in and actually go to places to actually view.
What if we just let him do the fly?
Well, I think one of the concerns with the flyover, and it was just recently brought up, is that when you're looking at a flyover and you're looking at a piece of property, we can, you know, you look at the roof of a house and we, we measure it and we say, okay, this is what we think. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath. But if you actually walk onto the property and view the house, it could be gutted because they're not using it but for storage. Um, we do have an example where there was a value put on something that looks as if it should be from the flyover, a normal value of a home. But when you're actually out there, there's nothing in the home. They're using it for stores. There's no windows in it. Because it's just an old home place of someone. So without having someone on the ground to view that and see it, that means that someone's property could be valued higher than actually necessary.
I believe if it was, they would sort of go down with the tax.
You would hope that they would appeal it.
But, uh, if he just basically does apply, it's not going to cost that much.
No, and we haven't talked if he uses the flyover. Because we have, what they have submitted for the full list and measure has not been done in many years. We've tried.
I don't, I don't like the idea of the boots on the ground, of people's property. Ain't into that. Ain't into the tax period. I think the cheaper we can get by with it, with that. Because now if we give this man five hundred thousand dollars, his taxes going, this five hundred thousand dollars is going to eat your tax earnings alive. So you, you, you're just spinning your wheels. But he's doing real good. So it, it makes little or no sense. If we can get by with flying over like we have before with state law, let's do it that way and save the money. Either having people out, approaching around our county. That's my thoughts.
Any other thoughts?
What kind of a time span have we got to get this through?
Uh, the sooner the better because with all companies, um, they're taking on other rebows. So I know currently one of them is taking on a sister county, uh, part of a sister county's revow for the same timeframe. So we would want to make sure that the sooner the better to move on it, to make sure that we're actually on their list.
Lottie, do they know our county is just tiny?
They do.
I mean, real tiny. Our sister county, they're going to have a great big deal, right?
Yeah. And it, and for us, it's based on, it's a dollar amount per parcel is exactly what they're looking on. So, um, I think that most of those are done that way. So yes, other counties will have larger bills.
It seems like these are the only two companies that would be even be willing to, to look at our county.
Yes. The, the, most of the other ones just were not interested. And again, specialty, it's a niche. So there's not tons to choose from to begin with.
We just kind of couldn't do the flyover when it is what it is. We got time to put this off the blood next meeting to what we can discuss in a moment.
Um, I think so, but I would caution that I, I would like to have it done by June, at least. I mean, if, if we're wanting to discuss flyover versus, uh, boots on the ground with them, but I, we need to get it rolling.
I'll make a motion. We table it in the meeting.
We got a motion in a second to table it. All in favor? All right. Next is our flood ordinance. It was, uh, presented to us last, uh, last meeting. And Ms. Gina, Mr. Jason, y'all want to come up and say anything? I know y'all gave us a, a couple nice little colorful pictures for me to see.
I did because y'all asked last time about how the flood plain affects. And so I tried to label them. So this one's Alarca, this one is Town. And, um, so the blue hatch area here, that is the floodway of the river. Uh, you can't build anything in there. Uh, you're not supposed to, or it's hard to do. The blue area is the flood plain area, which there are restrictions on building in that area. And the yellow area is the five-hundred-year flood area that we don't typically, it's not enforced unless there's federal money involved in a project. Um, so I just wanted you to see how those, and David, you had asked about how the new flood maps that, uh, there'll be a, um, July meeting for public comment um, on the Alarca intersection on this area right here. There's a little yellow dot on this house here. So that house was previously only in the blue area of a map, the previous flood plain maps that the state did. That house was previously in the flood plain area. It is now in the floodway of the river. And if there were ever something that would happen to that structure, they would not necessarily be able to build back in that area without a lot of, um, that to elevate.
Yeah. I mean, they could go back inside the footprint, but they couldn't go outside of it without doing a engineered odorize. And, uh, like I said, the, talking about the swift water area, that's, you can build in there, but you have, you have to pay a lot more money. Um, out the blue zones, it's all elevation. The elevation is to get you're dealing with a surveyor. And like she's talking about, the five-hundred years, the only time you ever worry about regulating that is, uh, when you've got federal funds involved. And, uh, you got a whole lot more, you gotta do a whole lot more public notice and all that, do more public comment just to be able to use those federal dollars in that five-hundred-year zone. But and what we're doing is getting our ordinance that we, we're getting it current. In other words, the one that's actually in place, we're just getting it on the books to be current. And like I said, I don't know how it slipped through the cracks before, but it should have already been current.
Yeah, I think there was some comment that we'll have to update it again.
Yeah, I, hopefully it doesn't change. I hope, because this is the one that is pretty much the model that they're going to go with when we go through the next cycle. So from what I understand, there's going to be a few changes. But, and like some of the stuff that I told you that was optional, uh, from what I understand is some of it's going to become mandatory. And, uh, like I said, they can, if we didn't participate in the NFIP, they could call for all the loans in that area, it'd have to be paid in full. So they could call for the value of whatever the loan is, if they've got loans on those properties. This kind of gives you a discount. It cuts it down. I'd have to really get into it. I think it cuts down by about fifty percent of what they're, what they're paying right now would double if you didn't participate for flood insurance. And all the time you have flood insurance, a lot of people like to have it, but when it's required, when you have a loan, because they want to be able to collect the balance let alone. And this is a way to give your community a, a break instead of having to pay that high premiums. I mean, we had that issue in Graham County and they didn't want to participate. And he ended up calling for the full value of some of their structure, including their school. And, uh, they decided that that wasn't a good idea at that point in time. So they, they come back into it. And like I said, we're just getting it current. We're already participating community. We're just getting our verbiage correct.
Any questions for them?
And those people that's going to go in, they get a, during the public comment period, they get an opportunity to protest, abstain, but they, and they'll listen. They'll have a guy and they'll have about four people in here with us from North Carolina Emergency Management and FEMA. And they'll sit down and go one-on-one if they don't, you know, if they're getting it. But like I said, there's ten properties coming in. And some of the changes are just like what she's talking about. There's, it's not really that they're adding them into the flood plain. Their zone has char, has changed because they've got better data now. And yeah, that's down the road.
I was just going to need the maps to show you what the flood plain.
Yep. Cause all we're after is getting our ordinance to the current ordinance level.
Do you have that for like deep cricket for there?
Yeah. But I mean, whenever they do the study, they'll give you, and it's all, all of the maps now are online. I can pull it up anywhere. Anybody's got access to a computer can pull it up. If they have problems getting to it, I'll be more than happy to sit down and go one-on-one with them to help them to understand what's on their end or what not's on their end.
And where, where do they go for that?
They, just call your office. Yeah, that's the easiest way. And then we can direct them, give them the actual web address and come, get them to come in if they will, set up a time, come in, we'll take them back to our workstation, sit down with them and explain it to them and show them how to get to it. If that's what they're interested in.
Any other questions, guys? All right. Uh, I need a motion to accept the, the flood ordinance as it's been given to, to us. Uh, I mean, uh, their office.
Make a motion to accept for repolish.
Second. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right. Next, uh, we need to, uh, vote on our minutes from our last meetings from April first work session, April eighth joint session with the, uh, Board of Education, April fifteenth with the regular session, and April twenty-second, our budget work session.
Make a motion to set them up.
We got a motion.
Second.
We got a motion in a second to accept them all, all in favor? Motion passes. Any new business?
I had an interesting phone call. Where I've been talking about buying fluid vehicles. Mountain Ford man called. And I, I got to talk to a real rut. But, uh, it's, it's fine. But, uh, I don't know what the deal is or what we've been doing, buying vehicles. But if we can get them cheaper, we would have get them somewhere. And I hope you all would agree with me.
Yeah, for sure.
Whether they're in-state, out-of-state, or they drop them out of the sky. If we can get the same thing cheap, that's the route we will be going.
Yeah.
I think our objective is save money, take back their dollars. But I got, I told you that I had, had the last two trucks I'd bought and both of my daughters drives a mountain Ford and my wife. And I would never buy another, see, it's all pretty red. But I don't know what kind of deal it would want on down there. You know?
I just make sure wherever we buy our next fleet, that, uh, they are the cheapest, but also we don't have to send them back to have maintenance.
We, we will get a warranty with our vehicle.
Right, yes. One hundred percent.
It doesn't matter where we buy them, we should get a warranty with them. Yeah, I've never heard of a new vehicle being bought without a warranty.
Anything else, guys? All right. Next, we have a closed session due to, uh, NCGS, North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A six Personnel Matters. I need a motion to go into closed session for those reason, or for that reason.
I never vote for closed session, but I would like a motion.
Okay, we got a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We will be back. All right, we will be back.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? There is no decision made in closed session. All right, and last on our list is adjourned. Make a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen, have a great day.